My name is Ben Miller, I'm the pastor of Hope in the Fellowship, and I will follow those up as he goes. God, we thank you for all of your blessings that you have given to us, God, for this beautiful day. We thank you for the leaders that you have given us in this community. We know that there is no glory that is not given by you, and so we thank you for the leaders that you have given us, and we ask tonight that you would give clarity and wisdom and the courage to make the right decisions, not just tonight, but in every decision that they have to make. We ask that you would guide every conversation and discussion point of this evening, and that your glory would be the utmost concern, and that the best for this community would be what is decided upon tonight. We ask you all in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. For the allegiance to the law of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Okay, now is time for the public comments, and the media or the media to address the city council's topic. However, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the city council from discussing issues which the public has not been given seventy-two hours' notice. Issues raised may be referred to city staff for research or possible future action. Comments are limited to three minutes. And we have a time to keep them. Does anyone else have a card? If everyone is turned on, just speak. Gary Bradley.
I have Gary Bradley, forty-one East, C-52. Pardon me, I am here not fully informed of that information put in front of me in the last minute. It's kind of, I think, disorganized in the course of things. But I come toward the city, once again, for reasons that, basically, I come from five generations of builders, building a better Texas and communities. Over a hundred and seventy years of experience of each generation doing so, and committed to the cities we stand before and work with. I did date over forty cities from Texas across the way, and I am amazed at what has happened here today. And I'm going to cover a couple of things. I don't have to be with the EDC to do EDC work. I diligently work with Craig on several problems downtown to mend restoration and restore feelings with property owners that the city has done whatever they did to them. We've worked towards them to make a human purpose for those properties, to improve the downtown areas. There's eight different properties that we've worked on and looked at that are in and around downtown. That's just one of the steps out of probably fifteen that I'm working on. The other one is that I am a major stockholder of an international alternative energy company, a company that's done over fifty million dollars in Australia in sales, done two-hundred million in China in sales, and we're currently working with the integrity of the Ministry of Energy in Italy to do the same. And because I'm a major stockholder, they've sent me, Gary, if you want our company, International, in Windsboro, we'll do it for you, to bring them here. They've got an energy product that's like none before, that anybody's ever seen, to revolutionize energy consumption in residential properties worldwide. Elon Musk is eating our guts when it comes to this product, and nobody can do anything wrong. I have made moves to develop a property, using this property here in Windsboro, for the purpose of displaying it, which has the capability of probably bringing ten to twenty-thousand people on an annualized basis to Windsboro that see this property in the course of things. And I also have two, not one of the two, TV celebrities that are in the building industry that, one said to me personally, we'll finance the entire project for you. I say all that to say this, that being on the P&amp;Z committee and the whole turmoil that happened last week is a bit up for, and rightfully so. I sat there and put up with some stuff I never should have had to done, and what I found out later today makes it even worse for me. So pardon me if I sound a little bit emotional at the turn of this. Joan, you sat in your seat one day when I came before council, and you said to me, Gary, I thought you were my friend. Well, I say you, Joan, after what you did at the P&amp;Z meeting the other night, Joan, I thought you were my friend. Only I found out apparently there was some difference there. And same thing with Cam. He came aboard, and appointed board, both of them, downgraded us in front of the public when we were doing our job. There is not one of them that has ever addressed anything that we did wrong in that board meeting from an OE vote or from the Open Meetings Act or any form of production of that. And to be downgraded by them in the process is belittling, especially when they did it for the sole purpose of gathering, gathering. They're garnishing their opt-in out to their Facebook friends, and that's what happened. We became liars because they didn't stand up to the Facebook friends who started calling us that. And in the course...
Sorry.
May I have an extension time?
Mayor, can we allow him a little bit more time?
Do we need to take a vote?
You can decide yourself, or they can vote.
I think we need to vote.
We'll take that one too.
All those in favor of giving Gary extra time?
Aye, aye.
Opposed?
Joan, you stated you were disappointed in our actions, but I have an email that our very actions were what you were expecting, and that email reads, and I quote, "Even though the Walker Park item is being pulled from planning its own agenda tonight, will the public still have the opportunity to speak on this subject? I know the neighbors in that area were planning and intending to have their voices heard." That is the same thing that happened with Cam. He's not here to face up to it, and I hate being in this position to have to do this before council or anybody else, because that's not my nature. My nature is to do business, do it right, do it justly, and for everybody. And this sort of belittling community effort from the council and the leadership of this city is devastating. I'm going to close quickly and not continue on this, because this has cost the city greatly. In the process of the business I have done, I have professional investors that are very wealthy. They have money on the line, and they're not stupid. And I want to give you an example, because everybody thinks Facebook is the Lord and Savior to every answer out here. If you haven't heard, if you don't know what Social Credit Store is, you need to take a look at it, because it's being done daily, and it is being done here, and it is being done adversarially, too. The point is that my investors know each one of your name, your background, and everything. They know it all. And after this meeting with the P&amp;Z, after the dress-down we got, I received an email, copies from two investors that had the comments that were made, and explicitly said, because of the actions of Joan and Cam in this situation, you're not getting the twenty million we promised you to use in Windsboro. We want you to take it elsewhere. It's not a loss to be a financial, it's a loss to this community, and I hate to see that, because I love this community. We've got people sitting up here that need to learn to be professional at this job. This is not a job you take life apart of. Cam himself, I asked him before the meeting, have you got a few minutes for me? And he says, in reply, it's going to be six to eight weeks before I can get with you. What kind of position is the mayor's position? If somebody can't sit in the seat of honor and do more justice for the public than that, this is pathetic. There are options within the Texas Municipal League to learn how to lead this city. I've been before many cities, and I've had to do this several times, and I regret doing it to this city, because I love each and one of you. Joan, regardless of what I say tonight, I still count you as a friend. And the people behind me, whether they agree with me or don't, I want to make sure they've got my phone number, because my best interest in this community is to see that there's unity throughout. And that phone number, and I hope everybody's got a pen to get here at me, because I am open anytime, any point, and I will make a return call within fifteen minutes if I know it's in regards to this city. And if you don't call me back, if I don't call you back in fifteen minutes, I'll buy you a steak dinner. And that phone number's two-one-four, excuse me, nine-seven-two, four-six-six, three-eight-three-five, and my extension that will find me is three-zero-one.
Three zero one?
Three zero one. I am here for the city, and I am furious, because I've got the same situation with Cameron, where the whole situation that arose about Craig's job, I'm the one that called for that meeting to be handled, and matter it did. The call of the meeting was professionally done, there was no reason to be downgraded. The city or the council people involved need to apologize to my fellow council members. I don't care what they think of me, but those, not council members, commissioners, they need the respect they deserve for cities that's volunteered before this city, being down-dressed like they were that night. Damn it, this city needs to be more professional.
Look, please be careful with your language.
Mayor, just to clarify, I cannot respond to any of these comments. Is that correct?
Right. Okay, our next one that would like to speak is David Corning.
I think you're very familiar with it. My name is David Corning, I'm president of Corning Enterprises, LLC. I'm on the P&amp;Z committee, and I like Gary. I didn't like it. I have built four homes in the Blackjack Peach Street area of Wrightover by Walker Park. We've changed that community. We have built nine homes in this town in four and a half years, and I plan on building three more in the next year. I like you. I want to watch this town prosper and grow. I've had people come from Blackjack Street, walk up to my house and say, thank you, I can finally walk my dog outside and not be afraid. And then we get all this flatback about Walker Park. What about Walker Park? Do you know what county it sits in? Franklin County. Do you know it's dated to the city? Yes, it is. Have you go up and looked at it and dug out about what it's supposed to be? If this city decides to close it down because of lack of maintenance and repair and sell it, I have read in the paper that it goes back to Baylor University. How wrong you are. What they want, Baylor, is the endowment from the sale. And talking to Baylor yesterday, they said to me, or this morning, you know, Mr. Corning, we don't want to do anything in Windsboro with three acres. I want you to do an endowment for us, to take care of students, so on and so forth. In the will of the Walkers, it does state that you can sell this property, as I've said before, if it isn't maintained, and it's not that maintained. I built in that area. I take my own carpenters, walk over there and pick up trash. I go over there, and we rake it so it looks halfway decent, because I want a presentation when you drive down the road to buy what? My house. That's what I'm in the business for. And when we sit here and we volunteer to be on this P&amp;Z committee, I take offense to being called a liar. I take offense that our mayor is not strong enough to tell people how to conduct themselves at a public meeting of P&amp;Z. We had people talking behind their back, making gestures to the city administrator. Why would you do that? That's rude. And somebody from the council should have stood up and said, that's wrong. I don't care for it. I'll stay on this committee, and we'll work hard. We know what we do. Gary and I have traveled to three different cities on our own to take a look at their P&amp;Z program, and how it can get better, and how it can't get better. All we ask is have the respect in how to run the business meeting here professionally. It's rude. It's rude to the people on the P&amp;Z, and let me tell you something, it's rude to the people of Windsboro.
Mayor, I have a question. Your public comments, isn't it to be made for anything that is not on the agenda? And it seems to me that these comments are having to do with Walker Park.
Seems to me they have to do with planning its own commission.
But they could comment on Walker Park, which is under item number six-point-one.
Yes.
So will I have an opportunity to respond under six-point-one, since that will be a discussion on Walker Park?
Just pretend you're Walker Park when you get to that. Jonathan Hill.
Jonathan Hill, nine-sixty-nine Wheeler, business owner, investment citizen. For goodness sakes, what we find ourselves dealing with, huh? I too have been accused. I would choose liar over what I've been accused of in the community. And guys, you know, I wrote up, I come this evening to implore you, actually, I guess. I wrote, and I thought, and I prayed all day long about what to say here tonight. And I honestly have had a very difficult time coming up with words, because I don't want to attack anybody. I don't want to seem one-sided. I don't want opposing opinions to be cited. I don't want the other side, as it were, the left or the right, to not be able to speak. I think the diversity and discourse is what makes us who we are. But somehow we've lost discourse into discord, as you can see, tonight. Folks, I want to ask, I want to add something up here. I know you can't respond tonight, and I'm not asking you to respond tonight. But there's a point in our community, and unfortunately, or fortunately, I'm not sure which, it is social media-based. It's become a platform for an awful lot of discord, and very little of any discourse. The thought and accusations, the innuendos, that Craig Lindholm is a thief and a liar, is just, it seems to be endless. And I don't know all that much about city government, but I will tell you this, I'm pretty sure I do understand the fact that he presents, and then you guys vote. So whatever action is taken by the city would ultimately be your responsibility, if I'm not mistaken. Now, I guess he could be some kind of wizard that has a spell cast upon you guys, and he's affecting the way you vote. Maybe that's the case, I don't know. I have considered that possibility. But after what happened Saturday, as just a citizen, and I'm uneducated, actually, I'm just tired of it. But Saturday, it seemed to me that a meeting was called where the mayor or someone was intending to get what looked to me like a split vote, to get rid of Craig. I don't know if Craig is guilty of anything. I'm certainly not here to defend him, I never have. But I do think he deserves a fair shake, and I do also think that he's innocent unless he's proven guilty or something. I thought it was clear that, back in June, I think it was, that you guys met, and y'all had a, okay. Please, put it on the agenda and address the situation with Craig and the other stuff that's going on here, and get to the bottom of it, so that we can get back to the progress of our city.
Thank you.
Please, make a motion, somebody, and take action. Investigate. Finally, once and for all, and put this to bed, would you? Thank you.
The next speaker is Corey Miller.
Corey Miller, four-five Moore Street, Windsboro. Owner and manager of C. Miller Brewing Incorporated for thirty-six years, been living in the city limits six-plus years. I was shocked at the prospect that anyone would be considering selling Walker Park, dissolving Walker Park, capitalizing Walker Park. I understand there hasn't been as much interest in the park in recent years. A big part of that was because we had a horrible drug house fifty yards behind home base that, fortunately, I guess, I hate to say it that way, but fortunately burned to ground some months ago. And since then, the entire ambiance of the neighborhood has raised three levels. And in a city that's now investing in how many billions of dollars in new schools, the idea that that mindset would be moving that way to schools and then turn around and look at a park that's a quarter mile from downtown, and say, how can we get this off our back? I can't process those two mindsets existing at the same time, at the same time. So I very much hope that the board will be developed, the citizens' board, to try and enhance the value of the park to the city. In a city that's investing the kind of money that we're investing on new schools, it's not a time to be turning around and shaking off parks. I can't put those two mindsets together, they just don't tie. Yes, there's been a lack of interest in the park in recent years. I think the biggest explanation for that was that drug house. We see people out walking their dogs now. We see people jogging. You didn't see that a year ago. People were hiding from what was going on there. I was driving to work one day and had to call 911, because there was a fistfight right in the middle of the road behind home base there. That was the kind of situation when people were scared. And the idea that we didn't be considered at a time when the city's trying to move into new schools and trying to take the next step to the next level, the idea of dissolving the park is just baffling. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and our next comment will be from Ray Smith.
This is not, I'm sorry. This comment's not on the six-one agenda here.
It's on the agenda for your discussion on the...
This is six-three, is what I put down for...
If you'd like to wait...
Until six-three, that's fine.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you for your comments. We'll now move on to item number five, the consent items. This section includes items that require action by councils with little or no discussion expected, and by a single motion, second, and affirmative, a joint vote, items under this section are approved without further discussion.
Mayor of Cam, I'm requesting that item number five-point-one, council discussion, possible action on the establishment of youth advisory council, be pulled to discuss separately. Item five-point-two, consider approval of additional funds for a depot renovation, be pulled and discussed separately. The investment reports, item number five-point-four, be pulled and discussed separately.
That all?
That's all.
Three, four, one, two, four. Okay, council, do you have any questions on the others? Those will be moved to talk about individually. We'll go ahead and discuss the consent items first.
Mayor, I make a motion that the consent items be approved as presented, except for those that have been pulled.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of that motion?
Aye, aye.
And all those opposed? Okay. All right, so next we'll address the five-point-one, which is council discussion and possible action on the establishment of a youth advisory council, which is called GAC.
The city staff have prepared brochure for council review, and our pivotal staff is willing to assist the council in the youth advisory council programs, current workloads, and other duties, increasing responsibilities in multiple areas, and assistance would need to be in support of with council leadership. And I believe that Ms. Morris wanted to talk about establishing a GAC committee, so alternative would be...
Thank you. The youth advisory council is something that Dennis Whitehurst denied years ago, had attended a conference, and were very impressed by. Wanted to get it into Windsboro, working with the high schools. So I'm glad to see that this brochure is finally developed, and thank the staff for doing that. I know that it needs to also, we can't just put the brochure out there and not have anybody really helping out with getting this started in our high schools. So I agree with the fact that it needs to, that someone in the council needs to be in a supportive role of helping out and getting this started in our high schools, in order to bring it through a better understanding of council runs, with our young people. And I believe that...
Council members are honored to do that.
And I believe Wendy, can you also serve on that please committee?
Okay. Do you want to put in the form of a motion, or anyone else have a comment? You don't say that they have action.
Mayor of Cam, I move that this recommendation for establishing a youth advisory council in Windsboro with the assistance from council member James and council member Blake, to begin this program with the high school being approved.
We have a second.
I'll sit.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
And all those opposed? Certainly everyone's in favor. Okay, and then moving to item number five-two.
Mayor of Cam and council, as you know, there have been several improvements to the depot, and originally when the improvements were designed and thought about, and we moved the handle around, replaced it with that great-looking handle that we have right now. We thought we'd be able to patch the stucco that was degrading under the base plate that was at the bottom of where the handle is, but unfortunately, the patchwork wasn't going to work there. So we had hoped to patch it, but of course during the remodel, it was discovered that it would be insufficient, so we're going to have to basically repair the entire stucco that is on that wall, which was going to increase the cost of the renovation of the depot by approximately sixty-five thirty-three. And you have those supporting documents in your file, which shows what has been done. I'd like to note for the public, so that they know exactly what has been done, but obviously we have a new railing, we have new stairs. The wooden stairs that were there were degraded and were unsafe, so it's with composite stairs that would last basically forever. The railing and the handrails have been replaced. The entire walkway has been power washed and cleaned, and now it comes time to address the stucco. There's also been a lot of cosmetic improvements on the inside of the depot, which hopefully you all see when the museum opens on September twenty-eighth. So they're requesting, maintenance department and staffs requesting additional sixty-five-hundred thirty-three dollars to go ahead and repair the stucco on the exterior where the walkway is below the rail. Any other... Any other things, Dan, that you know about that?
No, but Chal Naya, the gentleman that's doing all the railing work, he has contributed a lot of his time to this project, in which, I mean, he still is going to repair the clock and the heritage side clock is something that he's very passionate about and is going to do in the meantime. So that is part of, and he has done a lot of the labor as part of this project.
And that's all talking. And we've also had, I did note, some other donations from Winsboro Harbor and Foxworth also. This has truly been a community project. We just need a little bit more to get across and finish them.
Council, do you have any questions?
Mayor Prokton, my reason for pulling this discuss separately is that I was a little bit confused on the bill on this, the total amount being six thousand five thirty-three. But it had included the demo of the stairs and a couple that it designed. This is a wonderful project and I'm looking forward to developing under twenty-eight. Thank you.
You have any questions?
No, I have a statement. I actually have, I've actually had public folks in the community approach me and tell me how thankful they are that the renovation has taken place there and that the stairs and all, it's just helped a lot of people, that it was difficult for them to get up those stairs and down those stairs. So I think it's been a very good project for folks in town. It's been very positive, a lot of positive feedback, a lot of...
Mayor, I move that we approve the additional funds for the depot renovation as presented.
We have a motion in this statement. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, and then item five point four.
Mayor Prokton, I ask that this item be pulled from consent items because there were some discrepancies in the information that we received as council. And Dana, could you speak to that?
Oh, yes. Yeah. Some of the items that were posted was taken from an Excel spreadsheet that had multiple copies on it. And so when I pulled it into the agenda packet, it pulled all these work papers in that I do not use. I do have copies that anybody's more than welcome to get. I will give you copies of the, but there should be four pages. And there are three statements and reports in here, and they would get us cut out from all of our disgruntled financials that we've had in the past. So we've kind of got all these up to date. But there should be four pages in there, and there was a lot of information in there that shouldn't have been in there. We've replaced it since then, and I do have copies that anybody's more than welcome to have to have had.
I think it was not in the copies.
No, stay in my office.
Your computer's in the...
It is online, correct? Yes, we have it.
Any questions for that?
Thank you. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move that the investment reports be approved as presented.
We have a motion, we have a second. Motion, second. I have a coordination, a second, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Okay, so we'll now move on to item six-one, establishment of a city...
Establishment of Citizens Committee for Preservation and Improvement of Walker Park. On September, I believe it was the fifth or the sixth, I had the pleasure of being with Mr. Bill Jones and Ms. Nan Saucier. They, for the purpose of discussing a request that the city council endorse the appointment of volunteer citizen committee, which would be responsible for the preservation and the improvement of historic Walker Park. Mr. Jones asks that the city council also endorse his appointment as the first chairman of this committee, and Ms. Nan's appointment as the first secretary of the committee. They request that the city council endorse their ability to select other citizens to serve on the committee, and also to establish a city liaison for the committee. Council could appoint that individual. While the park has been underutilized and more poorly maintained for the past several years, Mr. Bill and Ms. Nan recognize the historic value of the park and wish to create a community group, a community group that would assist the city in the planning and maintenance of the park. They've also identified the following purposes for this committee: park preservation, park planning for maintenance and improvements, and finally, and very much importantly, increasing the usage of the park by the community. They've also indicated that other potential committee members might include Pam Keller, Pat Wilson, Kevin Hollowell. The staff heartily recommends the appointment of this committee and the retention of the Walker Park as a city park, and the plans of establishing Walker Park as an official City of Winsboro historic site through the Winsboro Historic Museum. And I might add that the staff would also recommend that any usage of the park, including who would be responsible for the ball fields and things like that, would go first with their approval of this committee, then come back to council for final approval. And I believe that, which one of you all wants to speak for?
I'm not going to.
Of the...
My name is Bill Jones, and I'm...
Nan Saucier, where do you go, hold it up?
And the problem that Walker Park has been taken care of, and Ms. Saucier and I spent one and a half hours with the city administrator, and all of the questions, the answer the questions and our satisfaction. I had all the arrangements in Walker Park, if we're the city, and those that I've collected through the years for historic purposes. And we're here to request the approval of the Walker Park Preservation Committee. Remember, it will be an arm of the city government, just like the preservation league was for thirty years. The purpose is to protect the park, enhance its use, restore the facilities, and pass on to future generations Winsboro's oldest park. It was created in nineteen eighteen. It was its most famous bit, it was home of the Winsboro Alders, it did as many as two thousand people at the park, were ball games, and that was already its heyday. The members that we'd like to be to consider, you've mentioned Pam Keller, Pat Wilson, Reverend Kevin Hollowell, and the scouts, that's the two seventy-nine. They use the building there, was first built in nineteen forty-four, and it's been replaced since then, but we thought the scouts would certainly have an input. And also, I'd like to invite representatives of Team Air. Everything that you see there was donated by Team Air Express. The bleachers, the concession stand, the feds, and even the scoreboard. I remember I was out there with Joe Bronson in nineteen ninety-five, when he, I said, "Joe," that was a nice gesture on your part, he said, "Well, Bill, this is my community. I love this community." And he said, "The Lord has provided me with a lot of help." And I said, "Well, Joe, on behalf of people of Winsboro, I wish to thank you." He said, "Don't thank me, you should thank the Lord." And I never remembered that. And clearly, Nan and I plan to visit with a warden at the substance abuse center and see if they will offer help in helping to take care of a maintenance problem to the park. We will do that. I've been doing all the talking now.
Okay, all right, I'll say. I see what, I've never had such much community support. I have had emails, I have people calling, and not just people within the city and not just my neighborhood, but people that live, you know, maybe in the country, they chose to live in the country. And I thought, well, you know, this is a community, it's just not, you know, because I live in town, I'm a town person. It's a community that includes everybody out in the country too. And I have never had so many emails and said, "Hey, you know, you've got to save that park. It means a lot to me." And tonight I brought Ms. Sarah Sarat, and I don't know her, she lived here forever, and she said that she had been getting phone calls from her kids, friends that had played at that park and said, "Hey, you've got to do something, you've got to go for it, you've got to save it." I just appreciate all this, I'm overwhelmed at the amount of people that have contacted me. I'm getting so many good ideas, it is unbelievable, stuff I haven't thought of, you know, before. A lady called me the other night, and she just had one idea, and she has a business in town, she doesn't live in town, but she has the best idea about it, her. And I tell you, it warms my heart, Saturday afternoon, you know what was happening Saturday afternoon on that ball field? The little kids are arguing about practicing. Now, they didn't have a game, I guess they were practicing before the Wednesday game, because there wasn't another team, they were throwing uniforms. And then I don't just see girls down there, you know, girl ball teams, I see little boys. I see them all, when I water, I can see, you know, because I'm right there in outfield. And I see little things out there practicing, it just warms my heart. And somebody asked me, said, "Well, does that bother you to hear the bat crack, you know?" I said, "Oh, we love it, we love it." And I just want to know, I appreciate the support that I've had from y'all too about this, because it is a historical park, and I look at things that other people just disregard, and I'm glad that y'all are just, thank you.
Thirty-five years ago, we had the same problem up at the city cemetery. And myself and others, we formed a group. There was drugs going on up there, there was everything kids were up to ten, eleven o'clock at night. And when we formed the Association for Protection of the Cemetery, it was amazing how people set up that fence that you see around the park. We raised money for that, we raised money for the wall on the north side, on the south side, we raised money for the sidewalks. So, you know, it can be done if people will just keep a cool head and give us time to work on projects like this. And I'm so happy, I've been involved in many, many things, Rockland Society, Rock Gym, all those things, it's been my pleasure. Winsboro's been good to me, but I think we all need to realize we need to have cool heads on this thing. I've seen Winsboro divided two different towns, and it takes years to put it back together when it happens. So we just, I think we need to, we need to sit down and discuss these things and come up with an answer and go from there. Winsboro's a big little town, it's not a bad town at all. That's all I have to say.
And thank you, that's all.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have comments, can I?
Okay.
I rely on my constituents to come to me with any concerns that they may have. Nan called me and informed me about the Walker Park being on the PNC committee as we're only quite concerned. She saw it on Facebook that was put on there by Ms. Chan Gilwell. And the council did not discuss anything on Walker Park previous to this. If you want to call council as being a discussion with the mayor and the city administrator, sure, there was discussion. But I'm in total support of a committee being formed, I'm in total support of activities being made, being done at Walker Park. But tonight, I've also been chastised, and comments been made that I feel that I need to respond to. And they had to do with Walker Park, in that it was put on a planning and zoning agenda. I have a timeline of emails, and I want to read that to you, because, Mr. Frinell, you have questioned me on an email, and so have other committee members, commission members. On nine-three, at eight oh eight AM, there was an email from the city administrator to David Carr saying, "This item will be pulled from the PNC committee agenda. It will not be discussed tonight. I can meet this evening with you after the meeting." At nine eleven that same day, I sent an email, yes, I sent an email to Craig and Cameron stating, "Even though the Walker Park item is being pulled from the PNC agenda tonight, will the public have the opportunity to speak on this subject? I know that the neighbors in this area are planning on attending to have their voice heard." At nine eighteen, Cameron responded, "I thought it was staying on the agenda." At ten oh six, while Craig and I were in a museum meeting together, he responded, "The PNC, the Planning and Zoning Commission, wants to pull from the agenda, wants it pulled from the agenda. The Planning and Zoning Commission wants it pulled from the agenda." And refer it back to the council for further discussion. It will also be a discussion from item in council agenda, hopefully, along with a draft agreement from Mr. Carr. At eleven nineteen, Cameron posted on his Facebook page, "The PNC Commission pulled the Walker Park agenda item from the agenda and refer it back to council for further I'm going to finish telling you what happened at the meeting, because some of you are saying things out there that you were not at the meeting, you don't know what transpired during that meeting. All it would have taken was for this, when the item came up on the agenda, was for the city administrator to say, "There have been new developments, we are pulling this, it is recommended that we pull this item from the agenda." That didn't happen. He went on with the discussion. And I'm going to tell you right now that I have had a discussion with our city attorney, and this is a question I asked him. When you want an item on the agenda to be discussed at a future meeting, do you pull it, table it, or recommend that it be moved to a future meeting? His response, as of yesterday, was that a council member or a commission member can make a motion to table the item to a specific date or to a further meeting. My next question was, was if the city administrator or mayor state prior to the meeting in emails or on Facebook, an item is to be pulled, should that item be discussed anyway by the board or council? Listen carefully to his response, please. Both of these should not have happened. Prior emails between the city administrator and the mayor, and any posting on Facebook that the item was pulled, should not have happened. It should have been stated in the mission meeting. Once pulled, however, there should not be any discussion. The city administrator should have stated that the item was pulled. That's the response from Stan Lowry, our city attorney. He further went on to say... He further went on to say, and I wholeheartedly agree with this, and I think every commission member and every person out there will agree too, this is the appropriate procedural approach. That the item be pulled, that it not be discussed. I have copies of those emails, and I would be happy for anybody in here that wants a copy of them to just ask me and I will make them. But every single email that I have documents what I just said. Now, you can, there's one other thing that I want to add, and that was about the meeting itself. For those that were not there, I listened to comments, and at five minutes to six, I believe Nan was talking, and I received an email or a text message from my son, who had just left the emergency room. He could not walk because of a back injury. His text message was that, "I'm out of the emergency room, I'm headed to your house, but I need to get prescriptions at the pharmacy, CVS." CVS window was closed, it's broken, it was damaged. He said, "Mom, I can't get out and walk and go give them my prescription, can you help me?" And that's why during the meeting, I left to go help my son. That was at five minutes to six. At the same time, when I walked out to my car and the discussion was continuing on this item, I texted Cameron because he was concerned about this. Now, all I said was that the item is being discussed, they did not pull it. That's all I said, I didn't have any conversation with him other than that I sent that text, and I will admit that I sent that text. As it turned out, when I dropped off the prescription, came back out of CVS, walked in my car, Cameron was driving up the street, and we walked in together into that meeting. At the end of the conversations, and I didn't quite get to hear all of Nan's comments, but during, right after, when I came back, our mayor, Mr. Carr, approached the commission on the fact that the thought was that it was going to be pulled. I also approached the commission with my comments. After that, I listened to a couple of other items on the agenda, and then I left so that I could get to CVS before they closed to get prescriptions for my son. Now, if you think that that was inappropriate, please come and discuss it with me.
Thank you, Joe.
May I add a little detail, please?
I do have a question too, actually. I actually, I wasn't there personally, but I do have the copy of the entire meeting, and I've listened to it several times. And if, knowing that, then why would the mayor and why would another city council person make any comment at all if you knew you shouldn't have made one? And it shouldn't have, because in listening to that, in listening to what went on, what I heard was, there were people there, and they were given the opportunity to speak, but there was no, there was no back, there was no discussion with the PNC members up there at all. They were strictly open to the public for them to give their opinion and what they wanted, what they wanted to say, and all of that, you know? Because they had heard some things that we wanted to, you know, shut the park down, and that really was never the intent for anybody. Nobody really wanted that to happen. That was, couldn't have been for other people. But in fairness, everything had to be looked at, you know, when you're looking at stuff. And we do have guys on the PNC that really do know what they're doing, and to be able to have a plan that lasts fifty years or more, I mean, you have to have a level of individual that understands how to do that. So, but my question is, is that why would, why would our mayor go, you know, and listening to that? And why would y'all say anything then? Just let the public say that, and then at that point, you know, obviously, you knew where it was going to go. They were going to send it back to us, for us to look at it and see. That's, you know, I mean, that was my understanding of the whole thing in doing the research that I did and listening to it. It just, you know, I don't know why, why did you all feel like you had to say something?
I cannot answer for the mayor, and I will not answer for the mayor.
Right, no, and I don't want you to either.
I will answer for myself.
Yeah.
And that is that there were, I was informed that there would be a lot of people at the meeting that wanted to talk about Walker Park and what would happen to Walker Park if it were rezoned into a reserve engineering. Then they were told, "It's not going to be discussed." When I got up and spoke, it was for every single constituent and citizen that did not fill the seats that were out there. The ones where the seats were empty was who I was speaking to.
Well, I do understand that, but if, if nothing should have been said, it doesn't matter how many constituents that we got, he's not a city council member.
It started, the discussion started.
Just a second, let me finish. Why would we go ahead and do that? And I just respectfully think that maybe we shouldn't have said anything and allowed it to take its course and let the folks that came, because probably what would happen was, is those who were there, and once a motion would have been made to cancel that and to table it, they would have been disappointed that they came and they didn't get to say what they wanted to. But in all fairness, I think they probably shouldn't have allowed anybody to speak in reality, but I think they were trying to let people talk that were there, because there's been a lot of times, a lot of the government officials have been told that there's no transparency, and were trying to hide things. And I think it was being done in light of that. And then, but as a council person and as a mayor, we shouldn't have had anything to say. Just allow them to say it.
As a council person, I do attend several meetings that are not just council.
I understand that.
I would like to add some clarity.
I understand that we're taking a long time on this, and I hope I'm not allowing something that we shouldn't, that's not legal. But there has been so much damage done by this one event that I would like for people to go ahead and speak up, so I'm sorry, but that's just...
I will just...
I agree, it's getting too long, as long as we stay on the subject of Walker Park and not degrading other people.
Well, we're trying to discuss what happened at meetings at actual Walker Park.
Well, I think it all ties in, I think it all ties in. And what I'd like to add is, first of all, for clarity sake, the Planning and Zoning Commission is charged with developing master plans for the city. That's their role. They don't make decisions, and they don't implement the plan. That goes back to this legislative body to decide whether they want to do something or not to do something. Those master plans can include identifying historic districts and doing historic overlays on those districts to make sure that the zoning in those districts retain parks or downtown historic buildings, or whatever the case might be. It was written on the agenda not to change the zoning to housing. It was never written that. It was to evaluate the zoning and to do discussion of the planning and zoning of Walker Park. That's all it was. So, that was the intent. Somehow or another, out in the cyber world, it got way out of control. Going back to the meeting, okay? I want to write, I want to give you a good timeline. At eight AM, I was addressed by, contacted by a Planning and Zoning Commission member that said, "Craig, I feel that based on all that has happened on Facebook over the weekend with this, that it would be in our best interest for me to make a motion to have this table pulled from the agenda for discussion." And I said, "If that's the case, and that's fine, I'll notify the mayor." At ten oh six AM that morning, this is, this is a complete email, which I wrote our mayor. "The Planning and Zoning Commission wants," that's the operative word, "wants to pull it from the agenda and refer it back to council for further direction." They wanted clarity from the council. "It will also be a discussion item in the council agenda, hopefully along with a draft agreement with the softball association." Because the mayor had referred the softball association for me to talk about developing a draft agreement with, to bring both back to council. This is an important, this is an important line in this. "The outcome of Walker Park is a council decision, not a planning and zoning decision." "Planning and zoning was simply discussion of possible zoning and design issues regarding the future of the park." Those design issues could have and would have included possibly retaining it as a park and making it a historic overlay so that it would be protected in perpetuity. The process would have been PNC discussion options, okay? Then the Economic Development Commission participating, discussing possible incentives, if that's the direction the council wanted to go. Two public hearings, council discussion, and then a council vote on the outcome. Total transparency and ample time and opportunity for public comment and understanding. Shortly after this was done, Facebook posts went out, not from me, but from the mayor's office, that said, "This was pulled from the agenda." This email does not say it was pulled from the agenda. This email says that the Planning and Zoning Commission wants to pull it from the agenda, because that was the information that I received from the Planning and Zoning Commissioner. The meeting convened that night, and I was asked by the Planning and Zoning Chairperson, there was a crowd here, as you know, there was a crowd here, and there was a lot of confusion out there about the purpose and everything. Planning and Zoning Commissioner asked me to come up and explain how we got to where we were. I came up and explained how we got to where we were. Took five, ten minutes to get there amidst distractions. After that was done, a commissioner made a motion for it to be pulled from the agenda. That wasn't mentioned a minute ago. But that motion was made, and I know that we have another commissioner here that can testify to that fact now, and I think we have the chairman here that can testify to that fact now. But because there was, there were several people here that were concerned about this issue, the chair felt that it was important that their voice be heard, so he allowed for public comment. There was no discussion with the commissioners. There was just an allowance of public comment on the concerns of those that were present about Walker Park. And then all of a sudden, there were a lot of other comments that probably didn't need to be made, and I think there was a lot of confusion on a lot of people's parts about that. But then the wheels kind of came off of it, and it just kind of went out of control. And then it's continued to go out of control in social media and in the press with a lot of misrepresentation of the facts since that time. This is the truth, and this is, these emails, if you want to read these emails, I'll make all my emails available to you, as well as the texts that I've received from council members regarding this issue. So, I'm very happy to do full disclosure here too. So, that brings us to the meeting that I held with Ms. Nan and Mr. Jones the following Thursday. We met for an hour and a half, as Mr. Jones attested to. And we talked about an agreement which we fully support, which I fully supported from the very beginning. And I think that we have a situation now that where we have an agreement, and that we just need to put this to bed and move forward.
Yes.
And allow this preservation committee to do its work, to make recommendations, and to let this healing begin in this community, you know? And I think it's time, I think it's time for us to do this. And I will be happy to, if the council wants to appoint me to serve with you, or if they want to appoint somebody else, I don't care. But someone from the city will work closely with you to make sure that Walker Park is preserved and that you provide the leadership for this community with regard to the planning, the maintenance, and the use of Walker Park. And that is the absolute truth.
Amen.
Well said, Craig.
Okay.
Needs to be put to rest. Therefore, I move that the request to establish a citizen committee for the preservation and improvement of Walker Park be approved as presented, and that the committee members, sorry, have stated the full authority. Sorry, she... Yeah, you can't take it off. It's all right. I move that the city council endorse the establishment of a citizen committee for the preservation of Walker Park.
Can I second that?
Okay, we have a motion and a second that the city council endorse the establishment of a city committee for the preservation of Walker Park. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Jones and Ms. Saucier for...
May I say something?
Yes, you may.
That would be, normally, for period of two years, it would be...
A two-year committee?
Yes.
May I, if I might, move in a minute to the motion. I just beg for a stoppage of the session for two-year term, and that the liaison, city liaison be appointed by the, by Ms. Jones and Ms. Saucier.
Would that just be an additional motion? I mean, we're going to vote on the motion, and you just say that as a motion.
Sorry, that is an additional motion.
Second motion and a second.
Yes, sir.
Actually, in the past, the city administrator is always up to this and the liaison, the citizens group, and then he reports it to the city council for your approval or disapproval.
Okay, well, what we're going to vote on now is to give you the authority to appoint that person. So, you don't even have to tell us tonight. Okay, all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed, you're on it. Thank you so much. Thank everybody for listening to the comments. And I just do pray that we can put this to bed now.
Well done, Joe.
Okay, let's see, let's move on to, where do we start? Six two?
Yes, ma'am.
Six what two?
This is Consider Affirmable of the Lax Agreement with the Northeast Texas Public Health District. Ms. Paul, I'm going to meet you up here in a minute. I'll do the, I'll do the intro and kick it off to you. Paul Thomas, Wood County Coordinator for the Northeast Texas Public Health District, which is referred to by the acronym NET Health, requests council consideration for her agency's use of the office in the east end of the decolitional use of the community rooms to create a presence of the NET Health Districts in Winslow. The health district does have an office equipment, but due to budget cuts, they need a smaller space at less cost. In exchange for the use of the office and the community room for training, NET Health has agreed to pay $200 per month rent and provide health classes and health services to Winslow. Proposal outlining the proposed offerings is attached, and I'll go through those, and I'll let you elaborate on them. Is attached. The office is currently occupied by the Assistant Economic Development Director, who can be relocated to City Hall when the city closes on the Prosperity Bank building to furnish an office located on the west end of the bank. Staff recognizes the value, Ms. Thomas, who is a current resident of Winslow and been one for twice on time, and is active in Wellness Coalition, and has a key role in Willa Palooza and other community activities to add to our city by our continual presence and therefore recommends approval. Paul and I have discussed this, and she's written a proposal, and I would like to read some of the things that she's offering. I might let her talk about it in little detail. "The mission of the Northeast Texas Public Health District is to prevent illness, promote health, protect our, and protect our community. We do this by providing life-saving..."
We do this by providing life-saving vaccines, teaching classes on chronic disease, self-management, and helping citizens prepare for emergencies. We would like the council to consider allowing us to office in the depot building. We can cover $200 per month in utilities, so that we can bring more service to the, to the citizens of Wentzville communities, such as diabetes classes, healthy living and nutrition classes, assistance with emergency planning, scheduled immunization, colleagues to provide vaccines for children and adults, provide health screenings, cholesterol and blood sugar, provide testing supplies for bacterial quality of private well water, work with businesses to provide resources for worksite wellness, and work with local nonprofits and other organizations to highlight related health services in Wentzville. All of the above services would be provided at either no cost or very low cost to the public, and we strive to ensure everyone, regardless of socioeconomic status, has access, has access to public health service. I have a former life as the Health Department Director, and I can't tell you how important public health is to a community, and Paul, I want to talk a little bit more about this, but we just appreciate this, and then staff would recommend the council give approval to this, because I think this would be a great asset to everyone in this community, especially our seniors.
So, I mean, I'll answer any questions that you have. We, we have some, you know, we work strictly off of grants. We only have three departments that produce any revenue whatsoever, so when we lose grant funding, we have to look for alternative ways to continue to provide these services. So we've done this in other counties and cities as well, so that's one reason we're willing to come to Wentzville, is where I'm from, and, and see if we can provide the services here. We have, we do have an old order of blood care bus that we've been given, so we're going to, it's going to be kind of like a mobile van, but we're going to be bringing out, so hopefully we can add some services to that. I currently do a considerable amount of classes and equipment at my office there. They've been very successful. We see mainly people with no insurance that can't afford the classes at one of the hospitals or the private organizations, so we're able to give them those classes, and we, we do a lot with our seniors as well. So since the Health Department closed here in Wood County two years ago, we continue to get calls for referrals for childhood immunizations and adult safety net immunizations, so we can provide those as well. So we just hope that the council will consider our request. If you have any questions, I'll contact you.
If you have any questions?
Okay, Mayor Prokant, I have a comment. I'm also a board member of the hospital here in Wentzville, and the thought was expressed at our last board meeting, the possibility of having an office set up and facilities set up for the Northeast Texas Public Health District. And I believe that it's, there's been some conversations between Ms. Thomas and the staff at the hospital, but no decisions have been made. It was, at the time of the board meeting, it was enthusiastically received, but nothing has been done to establish that. Therefore, because I serve on both the, the board at the hospital and as council, I will reduce myself in both.
Any more comments? Or mention?
I want to make a question, the lease agreement with NET Health was stated.
What's your motion? Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay. Another motion and a second, to consider, to approve the lease agreement with Northeast Texas Public Health District. We look forward to working with you, Paul.
May I extend the motion, would allow me to write the lease agreement off of me being the executor, but authorize the city administrator to execute it?
We add that to your motion?
She made the motion. To negotiate the lease agreement with NET Health and to execute the lease agreement with NET Health?
Yes. I would like to amend my motion to also allow the city administrator to execute the lease agreement with NET Health.
Okay.
And I will second.
You say, and we vote on the amendment first, Sarah?
I believe that's correct.
We never voted on the first.
Oh, yeah, well.
Let's give it on the amendment first.
Okay, all right. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
All those opposed, you're on it. Okay, and then all of those in favor of the original motion?
Aye.
Aye. And all those opposed, and there are none.
I think it should be noted that I reduce my session.
Oh, okay, yes.
And it carries.
Yes, it does carry. With a vote of four, because I can vote when I may approach it. And so, we go, Joan, but once you reach, you start it. Okay, all right, we'll move on to the next one here, which is six-point, the way you consider a request to submit speed change, request to text op.
Yes, Mr. Smith, would you please come up here? We have a request for private citizen, Mr. Craig Smith, at 706 South Wallman Street. You're still going to have to introduce yourself, give your address, to, for the city to submit a request to text op to change the speed limit on the section of South Wallman, South Wallman Street. Mr. Smith, you go.
Yes, my name is Craig Smith, my address is 706 South Wallman Street in Wentzville. My city is Wentzville. I've lived there for a few years now, and I've talked with a number of people that have been longtime residents on that street, and they all express the same concern I have as pertained to the state of the kids that are walking along that street from the middle school going over towards Dairy Queen. And there's a lot of them, it's not just a few, there's a lot. There's also a number of senior citizens that walk down the street going to Quiktrrs to do their shop, and I've also noticed other people that are just walking, and there's several bicyclists on that street also. It is a residential street. The speed limit is 40 miles per hour, which I think is pretty extreme, in my opinion anyway. Now, I submitted this to Joan, brought it to her attention, and she said, "Yeah, I think this is something we need to discuss." I'm not sure of the actual protocol, if this actually needs to go to text op, or if the city has the right to change that speed limit on its own without going through the text op. That's something maybe someone here could validate, I don't know. But the other part of it is, there are a lot of commercial vehicles going down that street because of the FM designation. And I'm talking big trucks, semi-trucks, milk trucks carrying 80,000 pounds of milk. Consider this, they're going 40 miles an hour down that street, somebody decides, "Oh, I'm going to make a right-hand turn." They make that decision in a hurried manner, and maybe don't get their turn signal on quick enough, but that truck there will see them, and there's going to be a accidental wreck because he can't stop. The speed limit's 40, he's not breaking the law. He may be following too close for the circumstances, but it's still what it is, it's 40 miles an hour. With the consideration of all of that, and the consideration of the safety of those kids walking down that street, I think it's to the best interest of the residents on the street and the safety of everybody that uses that street, even though they're not residents, if they're traveling on that street, that is a primary concern there, is their safety. I hope that the city will see this in that favor. I have gone down the street, and I think you all have the documentation there, the signatures of people that live on the street. And I did that on my own. I thought, you know, I need to have some agreement that I can present to you people so that you'll know that there are people that live on that street that think that it is proper to change that speed limit. And there's 36 or 37, and one, maybe more important than some of the others, but I won't say that definitely, because he is also a citizen like all of us, is the principal of the school. And you may note that on your sheets there. And when I approached him, it took me several attempts, because he was really busy, but I probably did approach him. And he read that proposal, and he goes, "Oh, definitely, this is something that needs to be addressed, and it needs to be changed for the safety of my kids." And that's his words, "For the safety of my kids." So I hope that this council will take into consideration the safety of those kids, the safety of the residences, of the people that live on that street, and the safety of the senior people that use that street to transfers to the pharmacy, the grocery store, and any other place they need to go, including the post office, or the downtown boundary area, or the downtown business area. And there are a number of senior citizens that don't have any other transportation other than pedestrian. They don't have a choice. So that's my proposal. I don't know if it has to go through the text op, I don't know. Maybe someone here could verify that, or progress that?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but I think that within the city that we can adjust the speed limits within city limits.
That was my interpretation of what I thought. Another point I made, excuse me.
That's okay.
Another point I made, address here, and it's stated in this, is the inconsistency of speed limits on that street. If you ever try it on down, you're not really sure what it is, but you know it's 40 at some point, because it's supposed to be very plain. There's a city, there are pedestrian crossing there, that speed limit is at 35 for school crossing. That's a little bit, I think. There is another street there, College Street, that has no school crossing. There's another Sherman Street that the kids use a lot, there's no school crossing there either. I think those, all three, or those other two should have those crossings with signs saying school crossing.
We may have to get text op permission on school crossings.
We do on the speed limit, too, because it's an FM road.
Okay, it is?
Yeah. But they shouldn't have a problem, it is excessive, I agree with you, it should not be 40 miles an hour on that street.
And, and given that we have 37 citizens that have signed off on this?
I was happy to do the legwork for this, believe you. It was my privilege to do this, because I feel that it was something that needed to be addressed. I don't know if it's ever been tried up or discussed, but this is something I think is important to be here with us, in consideration for the safety of the people in this city, not only the residents in that area, but anyone that travels that street. So I appreciate all your time, and I hope that you make a wise decision.
Mr. Smith and staff, if the council authorizes this, the staff will work with text op and work with our state representative to, to see if we can get this text op approval on this, as soon as we can.
So it needs to go through text op?
I think it probably does.
Yes, I agree. We actually tried it several years ago. But Chief, I'm glad you're in the favor of that.
Can I say something, as a principal of that school? I was a, I was a principal of that school for about 10 years, and we, we tried real hard. Everything he's saying is true. And I hate to say it, junior high kids, they don't look when they cross the street. I mean, we warned them 100 times, but after a pep rally, if you ever watched.
Oh, I know.
You allow the children that leave that gym and cross and come up to the residential section, which I keep up on calls on that. But I'm telling you, everything he is saying is so true, and we tried years ago.
So did the council.
I know. If that happens, we're going to lose kids. I'm worried when it looks bad.
That's my concern. And I may make one other point. There isn't a sidewalk. There isn't a sidewalk. They have no other choice.
That's right, they don't. Thank you so much. Thank you.
No, I tried to cover everything, but.
You covered it real well.
That's all right. Thank you, I appreciate you.
I would also like to thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Joan.
I would also like to thank you for bringing this to my attention, and contacting me on this so that we can get it on the council agenda. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your legwork, getting all these signatures, the math that you presented to us. I just want to thank you for all of that.
Joan, it is my privilege as a citizen of this community to be able to do something that may help. That's, that's the way I feel like I can go back to this community, so.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
And council?
I have one other comment, please. Because I think this does need to be approved, but I would like to say that if it goes to text op, it might need to go to text op, I would recommend that the traffic and speed survey be done at a time that is in connection with the school arrival, which means for school departure, not when it's like, you know, 5:00 in the morning or midnight. I have also driven on that street, and I see that.
Can I say, I'm one side of petition. Okay. I was supposed to say I was a carer, but I figured ECO covered all of them.
Okay, next time, your name and address, please.
My name is Homer Somers, I live at 707 South Wallman Street. Okay, I retire, so every time I sit down on my porch in the morning, and I sit on my porch in the afternoon, and I watch those kids cross that street. And as you were saying about doing the survey thing, my, my, what I like to see done is that from Scott Pharmacy, where they were willing to go to the drive-through, to halfway on the other side of Cedar Street, after the school sign, the same thing is over there on South Beach, where they're talking about certain times during school, that that speed limit down even goes down a little further. Because, I mean, I've seen so many kids, it's like, I don't know about the chief over here, but my stepdaughter went over to school with a friend of hers to pick up a couple of people, bring them up to my house. On the way back, they walk on that little strip from the curb to the white line, walking down that street. Well, a police officer went over and told them, "You need to walk on the grass." If they walk on the grass, they're going to walk on a hill like this. And if one of them had to slip and slide off that thing, the car's coming down, and they are walking, force trap. And they slide off that and fall on the street, the car hit, and it's going to be a problem.
Okay, we appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So much pleasure on this.
Mayor, Mayor Prokant, I make a motion that we request text op to conduct a survey, or that the city administrator contact text op regarding addressing the issue of the speed limit on Wallman Street as the crosswalks.
So secondly, we have a motion and a second to authorize Craig to contact text op to do a study on this speed limit, as well as on the rest of the crosswalks. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Moving on to item 6.4.
Yes, Mayor Prokant, council, consulting with our department directors, and we have a couple of them here tonight, due to some historic events and some more current events that have a direct impact on some of the, some contents of our updated personnel policy manual, respectfully, we request that we postpone consideration of this and table this until the September 24th council meeting, which will be a special meeting to approve the budget. And this will give the department heads and my set off some opportunity or schedule some time to sit down and work through some of these, some of these issues and do some edits and also give any council member that wants to submit any concerns or edits that they might have with regard to the contents of the updated employee handbook. There's some things in the handbook that we really feel like we need to get and get, that we do need to address this fiscal year prior to reading the budget as they do in fact, that is our request to table it at this time. Does that, y'all have anything to point out at all?
No, that's actually...
Sure. Thank you guys for being here.
Council, any questions? If not, we will postpone that until the September twenty-fourth meeting where it will be discussed again. Item six point five, Wood County appraisal district nomination.
Yes, Mayor Protem. Each year, the Wood County appraisal district chief appraiser submits a letter to the mayors of all the cities within Wood County and notifying everyone that it's time to reach Atlantic Ente to elect a board of directors for 2020 to 2021. There are five requisitions to be filled and may nominate one candidate for each positions. Nominations must be made in an open meeting before October fifteenth. It has to be done, the nominations have to be done before October fifteenth because that's when the names have to be submitted by written resolution to the chief appraiser for consideration. And before October thirtieth, the chief appraiser must prepare a ballot listing the nominees alphabetically by each candidate's last name. And then the chief appraiser will deliver a copy of the ballot to the presiding officer of the governing body of each voting unit. And before December fifteenth, each voting unit in open meeting reports its vote by written resolution and submits to the chief appraiser. Each unit must cast its votes for a person nominated, that was nominated by the, by the governing body to begin with. And then before December thirty-first, this chief appraiser must count the votes and declare the candidates who received the largest votes total as winners and submit the governing board body of each taxing unit. So there's five slots and this goes out to every city in Wood County. In the past, well, in the last three years, I can only speak of the last three years, council's not chosen to nominate anybody. If you choose to, this year, we need to do it at this meeting or we need to do it at the October...
September.
Or Sep- when is the October? We have to have, the name said by October fifteenth, so by September, October tenth, maybe, is that it?
October.
I believe it's October.
About eight.
So we have this meeting or the October eighth meeting. Y'all want to consider this and read up on it a little bit more, but it's probably good for the city to consider at least having some nominees to be on.
I think we tried a couple times, but never, never went out.
I'm just bringing that to your attention.
Thank you, council.
I just wanted to make sure.
We'll move on to item six point six, budget amendments.
Just wondering if you can come on and address the report.
Okay, most of these, this is just kind of coming up some of our financials and we will have a few more just because of some of the things that we have that are still ongoing at this time. I think that Bill's been posted today and I finished a job, so I'm going to shop those when I get them. And some of these are some of the revenues that we received from the insurance company to adjust the revenues for it and the expenses that we pay out from the hail damage. It will run over into next year, so we'll see some more of this next year. And some of the, the vehicle repairs that we've had done were due to the hail damage that we had on the vehicles from March and April. But the insurance companies we got in, we had, we had several of our vehicles that were going to auction that were totaled through hail damage. So we ended up making a little money on those, which helped us because we had to buy a new curse and cough at the airport. We ended up having to buy a new van for the clients for the maintenance side and then we had a new vehicle for the investigator for the place department side. So all in all, we had a total damage, the, when they totaled everything, we gave us the, we ended up coming out about even. And that's kind of where we did, we operated vehicles, trying to make sure that we came out pretty dominant. We weren't out in the division of funds. And then the other ones were on the grant side, the grant proceeds that we've received in, and a lot of these were the ones that Captain Chris Field did for the place department through the grants from NRA to JAG and some of the other ones that we did. We had to expense it and then we paid for it and then they came back and they reimbursed us fully for those. So these are just some of the adjustments from that as well. And the K-Roe maintenance contract, last year whenever we approved the KIPS side of it, which was the security side, we did not, we had already adopted our budget and so I, this is the adjustment to include that KIPS into the, for which we had allotted for this year, but it was to cover that additional expense on the security side of it for technology. And then James, Dr. Rain needed to keep coming, so he spent extra money on this late night this year, so we've been on hand and just with that because we needed to go ahead and cover that a little bit more. We could raise that for the next year. Hopefully, I mean, the rain did, but not that much at that time. And he also had going ahead a replacement ice unit and we're building repairs for this that as well. Those items will come under out of the water sewer fund, their general fund portion of it. And then the backhoe, the consulting company that was helping to put the budget together last year, we had allotted for this, but it was never, it didn't show the expense and the, how it was supposed to end up being paid for. And she said it was blamed on her, but I'm gonna take blame for it because I didn't catch it and I apologize for that because we wanted to go expensive when we got it in. But we are going to, they had an equipment replacement fund on the backhoe, they already had sixty thousand allotted, so we increased that side thirty-two thousand to three fifty and the equipment replacement fund is gonna end up helping us pay for that. So we got that, ended up, in that expense taken care of. So those are all the adjustments that I had at this time and if you have any questions, please, if you have to ask, if I can answer them, I'll get your answer.
No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a little bit of money in your pocket, just looking? Sorry, I forgot them. Can I call you? Okay, the Simons, that's what I'm on the side of, please, hold on a second. Couple of years ago, we had allotted funds to be able to pay for sirens, vortex sirens that we had, they ended up, we never got them. And we finally got them in, well, then we had to get the holes erected and all this other kind of stuff. So we got them this last year and we had to pay for them. This was like thirty-nine thousand dollars. It is divided between the police and the fire departments, so they have about twenty thousand dollars each coming out of their budget that we did not have allotted for. So we have, we have, we've got about nineteen eight fifty-five thirty-two added to each one of their budgets on that expense on their special purchase equipment, which was something that had been measured, was it two, last year or...
Yeah, I think it was two years ago.
Yeah, two years ago.
We had been budgeted two years ago and then...
Yes.
They were so far behind, we couldn't get it until...
Right. We could, so...
Thank you.
Adam, we will be in motion to peruse on this, the budget amendments. A lot of you are liking that, right?
Now, Chair, we accept the motion, then let's have the...
Motion, is there a second question?
I'll second.
Motion in, in a second that we accept the budget amendments as written.
Do we also need a motion on the ordinance? Goes along with that.
Orders and...
Oh, yeah.
Approval of the ordinance.
City council approved ordinance number one zero one three dash two zero one nine, amended amendment for fiscal year twenty eighteen. And I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? There are good. Motion carried. Item number six point seven.
Yes, Madam Mayor Protem. This is a cleanup action item, basically cleanups and motions that were made during the regular council meeting on August thirteenth. And this is, this is, has to do with two motions that were made unrelated. One had to do with the, well, during the regular city council member meeting on August thirteenth, two motions were made that do not coincide with the actual wording of the requests made. And sometimes we discover these things when we're going through the recorded minutes. The first one was that the Winsboro Rodeo Association requested hot funds. The wording of the motion was to grant the waiver that should have been to actually grant funds. And the second one was the Autumn Trails Association requested that the bathroom deposit be waived for the events during Autumn Trails. However, the wording that was made in the motion stated was to approve the fee waiver. The suggested action on this, just, this is just, again, this is just a cleanup in our minutes. To clarify this, it should be that the council should have moved, amended motion to approve hot funds for the Winsboro Rodeo Association to re-move to approve the request to grant hot funds to the Winsboro Rodeo Association in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars for the twenty twenty Winsboro rodeo. And the second one has to do with Autumn Trails. The council should amend the motion made on behalf of the Autumn Trails Association to re-move to waive the deposit for the use of City Park bathrooms for all Autumn Trails events held in City Park for the twenty nineteen Autumn Trails. This just clarifies it, will allow us to go in and change our minutes to reflect those corrected moment motions and I'll say the reason that this can't be one of those one action item.
Council, any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
That, just Mayor Protem, I've moved the city to approve the quest to grant hot funds to the Winsboro Rodeo Association in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars for the twenty twenty Winsboro rodeo and also move to waive the deposit for the use of City Park bathrooms for all Autumn Trail events held in City Park for the twenty nineteen Winsboro Autumn Trails.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Do you have any staff reports? Were there any of the staff that would like to give approval before in addition to what you have given us on that?
Resident farmer have anything to say?
We survived, we'll have to lose that in the hottest day of the year.
Tell us a little bit, just briefly.
Um, of course.
She loves doing this.
Yeah, my favorite. So shout out to Paula here as well because she is like my right hand, twelve blues, her third year, the Wells Coalition and Farmers Market have teamed up. And this year we added the five K run, which y'all may have recognized, the Hunger Hustle. This was about the eighth or ninth one of those that have been held in Woodrow, benefiting the Food Pantry here, Winsboro Resource Center. And we added that and the numbers have drastically dropped in that run to where we actually just held off on even holding it last year, just did without it. But we thought if we put it alongside well, that might boost it and it did in spite of the epically hot temperatures. We did it at eight o'clock, it wasn't, you know, nobody passed out, they all made it, so success. And it was, we reached below six hundred calories for the resource center through the runs. And then we, again, in spite of the heat, saw about six hundred people out there for the well of blues that we had, just a crazy fun amount of stuff to do. We sweated through the whole thing, but it was, it was really good. It was a fun time, so we're looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Real quick, our national night out is October the first from six to eight at the six.
October first, six. National night out, okay. Any other reports?
It's not a staff report, but our church is hosting, sorry. Good Miller too, by the way. Hope Hill Fellowship is hosting a Winsboro Community Block Party, free food for everybody. We're gonna have our inflatables out, bounce house, obstacle course, slide, volleyball, basketball, video games, indoor AC area for the adults to hang out in with board games. We'll have a little bit of everything for everybody completely free, just want to have an opportunity for the community to come together and just enjoy the game with each other. It's gonna be September twenty-first from four to seven.
Thank you, sir. If the community can answer. Okay, let's see, questions from the media?
I do have one. Last week, the newspaper goes to press around four or five o'clock on Tuesdays. I would like the opportunity to meet with Craig Lindholm. He made a statement that we misrepresented the planning and zoning meeting, we haven't even reported on it till this week, so I'd like to sit down with Craig and...
Be happy to sit down with you.
And to make sure we do accurate reporting because by the time we went to press, we hadn't been clearly informed of what the mayor said and what the meeting was about at that point. So, and we're very careful to do that and to make sure the information's verified, so I would like...
We'd like to do that. I think you've offered numerous occasions to even submit articles prior to publishing. I haven't seen any yet, but I'd be happy to sit down with you. I know that you've done that with...
I've done that with the mayor on his column and with Tom Perry on his column.
Yeah, you've also said, said that you'd be willing to do that with EDC and said that probably...
They've not submitted any articles for us to write.
No, no, it was articles that you were gonna write.
No, only articles submitted that are the mayor's column and Tom Perry's column.
Maybe I misunderstood, but I thought you said that you were going to...
No, like the column we wrote for the Autumn Trails.
Okay, we'll be happy to meet with you anytime, Chair.
Sure. Oh, good.
The next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth.
October.
Special meeting.
Yeah.
Special meeting. September is a special meeting, September twenty-fourth. That will be the next meeting. And then the next regular meeting will be... In the meeting is adjourned, it's seventy-two.